It's over, I'm going to roll call.
Oh, I'm with you. Listen to.
Yeah. I can see him, so he reminded me. Ready? Can everybody please stand for the flag salute? Let's move next to the flag. The United States of America, and the Republic of Georgia, ten, one eight, hundred thousand people, everybody. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the record and posting notice of this meeting in Borough Hall and the superintendent's office. I hereby call to order the public meeting of the Little Ferry Board of Education, Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at seven oh two P M. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Repolin.
Here.
Help. Mr. Phytros here. This is Gottlieb on the line. Mr. Mealy here. Mrs. Lussozo.
Yeah.
Mr. Borzak.
Here.
Mr. Benelli.
Here.
Mr. Rupadahead. We have a forum. Oh, Mr. Bradley.
Here. Great. Be resolved that the Little Ferry Board of Education approved the minutes of the regular public meeting held on January eleventh, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Repolin.
Yeah.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Phytros, yes. Gottlieb.
There.
Mr. Mealy, yes. Mrs. Lussozo.
Yes.
Mr. Borzak. Mr. Benelli, yes. Mr. Bradley.
Yeah. Well, now it's Mr. Parapatos to provide his superintendent's report.
All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start with the students of the month. It's gonna be, we're kind of doubling back here, so in December, for the December students of the month, there was a conflict with several of the students who received the award because of basketball tournaments of that nature. So we're gonna call them up first, and then we're gonna go into the January students of the month. So when I call you up, if the student can come up, and then. All right, so our sixth grade winner, for students of the month, is Kylie, did you have it?
One of us? Do you want to look?
Yeah, I do. Uh, do you know who this is, mother? Okay. Uh. Who's that, Brad?
Okay. I'll tell you, Kylie. Thank you.
All right, I am pleased to inform you that Kylie has been chosen as the December student of the month at her grade level. Teachers at her grade level make this election this important. And then the following things to say about Kylie. She consistently prioritizes her academics, always puts more of her best effort. She works well with all of her peers and often takes on the leadership role within the group. She is dependable and always a good role model for her peers. She never gives up and is always willing to learn something new. She feels an absolute pleasure to have in class. Graduated. And okay. Your top. Okay, on the screen. Um. When you do. Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm not. If you keep the point.
All right, our December student of the month in grade seven is Kara Augustin. And please to formulate that Kara has been chosen as the December student of the month. The teachers at her grade level have the following things to say. She is a hardworking student. She always volunteers in class. She positively, positively, positively adds to the classroom environment. She's very responsible, and she's dedicated to her work. Congratulations, Kara. Amber. All right, so we are gonna move to the January students of the month. In grade five, the student of the month winner is Ayane Song. I am pleased to inform you that Ayane has been chosen as the January student of the month. The teachers at your grade level have the following things to say about you. He is a new student to the district who has transitioned seamlessly. His work ethic is unmatched. He preserves students while learning English language. He well manages his academics, secure relationships. He's a model student and well deserved for this recognition. Congratulations. January student of the month for grade six is Jalen Flora. I am pleased to inform you that Jalen has been chosen for the January student of the month. Teachers at your grade level have the following things to say about you. He is creative student. He is kind, helpful, and always willing to help out of class. He is dedicated to her studies. He is cheerful in class and ambitious to learn new things. He is trustworthy, respectful, and a well-rounded student. Congratulations. Grade seven student of the month for January is Skylar Nakee. I am pleased to inform you that Skylar has been chosen as the January student of the month. The teachers at your grade level have the following things to say about you. He is hardworking. He is kind to his classmates. He is helpful to other students. He is eager to succeed and actively participates. He completes his assignments on time and is respectful to all of his teachers. Congratulations. Our grade eight January student of the month is Alia Dobrana. And please to inform you that Alia has been chosen as the January student of the month. The teachers at your grade level have the following things to say about you. Her dedication to her schoolwork and constantly effort that all she does is earned her design. She always shows kindness, respect, and an excellent attitude toward school. She is motivated and always willing to give a helping hand. She's a leather, deep, and great visitor to the classroom. Congratulations. And, um. Right away. Okay. Now we'll go on with the rest of the report. Uh, for our hip report, for the, since our last board meeting, we had two hips, one at Washington School, which was unfounded, and one at Memorial School, which resulted in the result that's classified as sub-founded. I also want to remind the community that February twenty second will be the community forum for the referendum at seven P M. in the gymnasium. We will have a panel consisting of our administration, bond council, financial advisors and architects, all there to answer questions, anything that anyone may have. We encourage anyone who wants to learn more about the proposed referendums that will be voted on March twelfth, please join us. If you cannot attend that session, we also have an open house forum on Saturday, February twenty fourth, which will be more one-to-one conversations and things of that nature. That'll be from nine to twelve on Saturday, nine A M. to twelve B M. on Saturday. And anyone who can't make Thursday, I strongly encourage you make that event. And like we've been saying the whole time, you can always email my office, you can chat my office with any questions that you may have, and I'll be more than happy to either get the answer for you or provide you the answer right on the phone. I also want to announce that in the demolition uh, or the site clearing of Washington School, the district was informed that, or was given, a hundred and ten-year-old time capsule that was found inside the cornerstone of the building. And the reason we found it inside the cornerstone is because that is one of the pieces of the building we're preserving. So hopefully be able to put it into the new middle school that's built. And it's cool as it is, and it's a really unique-looking box. Uh, it does have contents in it, it has not been opened. Uh, that'll be open on March third at three P M. in the gymnasium, which, which we're pretty excited about. And, and what we keep saying is, you know, that would have never been found if that building didn't come down, and the location was inside of a cutout inside of the cornerstone, so i- it's a really interesting time, and we're really excited to read some of the letters that are somewhere in there and see the kind of contents written in that box. Guess the next one, please, is please remember to get out and vote on March twelfth, as the polls are open from twelve P M. to eight P M. And with all that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Rupadahead for his student representative report.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, this school year is flying by. I can't believe it's already in the middle of the winter. For a student of the month, they have a lot going on in the future. Last Friday, the middle school had a pajama shooting there. This means we are celebrating the week of the sixth. Yesterday was Valentine's Day, and then the long we had our first snow day of the school year. The students wanted to thank the PK for the thousand, they fast party. Everyone enjoyed the tree. The student government did an amazing, did an amazing job representing the sales this year, if I may say so myself. I am, but I remember. In fact, April, a lot of friends who were in order to rocket flowers and delivering over five hundred for each. But none of this would, would have, have been possible without the generosity of Mr. Forrest, Forrest. Once again, Mr. Forrest donated all the flowers for the sale. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Mr. Parade, great job. Thank you. I'm going to. All right, and at this time, while we, we received our audit back, and we have Mr. Ferende here, who's gonna come up and just go over the auditor's report? Yeah, if, if you can give us one moment before you do, no, you're good, just.
First, congratulations to all the recipients of student of the month. Uh, we do wanna let you know that we're kind of getting into the business part of the meeting, so we will not take offense. If you decide to leave, you're welcome to stay, but we just wanted to put that out there. And again, congratulations to all the parents as well. It's a true testament of all of the work that you put inside of the kids, so congratulations again, and we'll now invite Andrew to come up.
Your auditor's report usually clears.
Sorry, I'll take the first.
Okay. Uh, we've completed your audit for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Uh, the, the board received two reports. The larger report is your annual comprehensive financial report, and then the smaller report would be your orders manager report. Included in the management report would be any findings and recommendations, if any. Every school district in the state of New Jersey is required to file both of these reports. As far as the annual comprehensive financial reports concern, it's primarily made up of four sections. The first section would be an introductory section. The second section would be your management discussion and analysis, which would be your financial statements in a narrative form. The third section would be your financial section, which would include an auditor's opinion, various financial statements and footnotes to the financial statements. And then the last section would be your statistical section. Uh, as I indicated, there is an auditor's opinion attached to your financial statements for June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. That is an unmodified opinion. What that means is that your financial statements are fairly stated and free of material misstatement. That's a clean opinion. That's the opinion you wanna receive on an annual basis. Uh, what I'm, what I would like to briefly discuss the district's fund balance at June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. The district ended the year with approximately seven point five million in fund balance. Okay, that fund balance is reserved or restricted for several different purposes, which I'll get into now. Uh, the district has set aside, uh, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, which it will, which uses the revenue source in the twenty-three, twenty-fourth school year. That's the year you're in, you're in right now. It has also set aside, uh, one point one million of, of fund balance that you will use when you prepare your twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, the, the district has established a capital reserve in the amount of three point seven million. It has established a maintenance reserve in the amount of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. You have a tuition reserve that would be available to be utilized in the twenty-three, twenty-four year in the amount of two hundred and seven five thousand. And then there's a tuition reserve for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then the last piece of your fund balance would be your unassigned fund balance, and that's in the amount of seven hundred and thirty thousand. Okay? Um, I will briefly now just get into, uh, the recommendations. We had four recommendations. Uh, the first was that the board, that board resolutions be prepared and approved, identifying individuals and salary amounts to be charged to federal grant programs. The second recommendation was that continued efforts be made by the district to obtain the statement of operations and related financial information from the food service management company for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. The third recommendation is that the county and district reports of transported resident students be reviewed and reconciled to ensure that the annual reports are in agreement. And then the last recommendation was that all acquisitions of equipment and building improvements be included in the annual capital asset inventory report. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to address those. Thank you.
Question, thank you.
Oh. I, you know, I wait.
Oh.
I'll wait. She's always there.
You can ask.
Oh, I can answer. I know it.
Good.
That is rare. First question, was there anything significant, significant change in the financial number by the organization? Twenty-one, forty-two, maybe two.
Any changes?
Yeah. Significant.
No, I mean, we, we just, um, we went through your, your fund balance increase, which is a good thing. It went up by one point three earlier.
Now you intended on speaking about seven hundred and thirty thousand. But that, what can you back, please?
One, one second. That. That would you. Yes, if they if that if the if it was needed to appropriate that fund balance, that would be.
Okay. That's what left. The one point three three that left over, has that exactly the same large amount?
You mean the increase? Well, it depends on from one year to the next. You know, budgeting isn't an exact science. So, you know, when 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 a school district is repairing the budget, you never know what you're going to get in terms of maybe spent extra, but like eight to four. So. So, like I said, not an exact science, so that was what we generated this year, which um.
Be good.
Which was a good enough.
When you say this is money for the next year. Um what was that what you said, yes, for one. That's not easy. Where does that money go?
What would happen is if you don't spend it, you basically would be required to anticipate it as a revenue source in the next four years. Correct, as 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 a revenue. Leslie, do you have a question? Leslie. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Right, we'll now ask Mr. Gomez to provide his board secretary report.
Hey. Good evening, everyone. In terms of facilities, uh we're working with the architects. Um one of the capital scheduled capital reserve withdrawals to upgrade and uh the unit events. So that was budgeted last year. Uh we're waiting for numbers because this one will be bid out. It's large enough. Where we should bid it. It'll probably be about a million bucks. So, and that's every single unit event in the building. So, uh next, we're we're looking for quotes right now. For, and I have to be careful what I say because it's security related. Uh upgrading the ability to lock down the building. So, we're going to get three quotes on this. Two for something more modern and one for something more conventional. So we'll be waiting on that. Uh we're also getting a proposal to do a thermal scan of the roof of this building. Uh to see where the and what kind of shape we're in. We do have solar on the roof, so that tends to degrade any bruise. So we just want to make sure so we can do it in a structured way. There's no way you would ever do an entire roof at one shot. It still needs to be. So they'll determine in what order and when we should start working on a on a roof. Uh so that's what we have on facility. Uh so with the bath pool court that was approved in a prior meeting, we're waiting for the weather to warm up to complete that project. And we are adding uh either totally replacing the backboards or. What kind of mix we're going to do. So we do have a committee that will make a recommendation. So we're waiting on that, but we're just waiting for the whole vote. So for finance, we closed January on February twelfth. Uh so that's finance. So in terms of the audit, so I have prepared the corrective action plan already. It's not due until forty five days after you accept the audit, but I always do them at the same time. So you've identified what the phone were and what I intend to do about it. So for transportation, uh in January, the state inspection unit inspected our bus. So this is on top of the regular inspection every vehicle does in New Jersey. Uh it comes out of Department of Transportation and they take our bus for the better part of the day and they go over the fine too. Oh. So that was completed. Food service, uh. Oh, you right now. So our reimbursement for the month of January will be thirty three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. That's between uh. The federal and the state, the state's a much smaller amount. The date we've got about a hundred thousand dollars worth of reimbursement. This is the number. Uh we serve. School lunches between the two schools, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy eight meals, which is running about what we did last January. Uh and we serve three thousand, eight hundred and ninety breakfasts. Uh in terms of free and reduced numbers are about the same from October fifteenth. There's really no change. Uh so in terms of the budget. So the budget calendar was finally released by the state last week. Uh they're just a little late. They're probably about two weeks behind. So what does that mean? So the governor's speech. The budget speech is scheduled for February twenty seventh, which is the fourth Tuesday of February. And having a lead year sort of messed me up. So forty eight hours after his speech. By law, they must release our state aid figures. And everybody's got a different prediction. So we don't, we really don't know. Uh so once we get the state aid, we have until March twentieth to turn the budget into the county for review. The county has until the twentieth of April to approve it. And then the first budget hearing would be. April twenty fourth and the last possible date is May seventh. So that's what we have so far. So just so everyone knows, we're time to district, which means elected board, and we have a November election. So those are those are the dates that I have so far. So yeah, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gomez. Well, I'll open it up to committee reports, uh Mrs. Bertoli to provide personality.
We met this past Monday for personnel. Uh we discussed hiring substitute persons for the remainder of the school year, also in addition to possibly hiring a second school nerd for next year. Uh we discussed the twenty twenty four, twenty five school calendar. The superintendent is waiting on Ridgefield Park to finalize our schedules so we can try and align it with Ridgefield Park. And hopefully by next month's meeting, we'll have a draft form of that calendar. Uh we also discussed the student custodian contract negotiations. Mr. Powerpadd and Mr. Goff Gomez have met with the secretaries in exchange proposals. And we'll be doing the same with the custodians in the next few weeks. And lastly, we discussed moving March twelfth to a single session day because of the voting and safety of the children.
Thank you, Mrs. Bertoli. Uh Ms. Filosuso for education.
Yeah, rates of case weight of digital interassistance. Uh that data is being analyzed to determine next step of construction and intervention. Rates, free to a teacher's coaches and administrator created a whole bunch of lessons using I ready. List for grade level during the way periods.
Thank you, Mrs. Filosuso. So actually, I I believe you're providing the N J S V A delegate report today. You want to?
Yeah, they continue offering the governance of one, two, three, or four trainings, that is mandated right. On the board, so that's what they have right now.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Finelli for finance?
We've met on Monday. Uh we discussed the financial report, the district audit and its findings. Uh we also discussed the new meeting uh meeting dates for the whole preliminary budget, which will be March eighteenth. And the budget adoption, which will be May second. We also discussed the capital project. Um that'll be recommended by the superintendent such as event, making the district group audit.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mealy for politics?
Yeah, we had no update at this time.
Great. Um any that you want to provide to the.
Uh we did do the bus, the transportation for the bus, we did do the evacuation drill that are required. Uh over the past couple of weeks. We did some of the outsourced buses in the morning. We went out to the high school to do some of the evac there. Uh we did some on the property here and then during recess, we started the evacuation drills uh during recess out here. So we're compliant with that. And right now, we're we're kind of in a holding pattern until we get our stated numbers about what the next step is.
Great, thank you, Parapato. Um as far as expansion goes, uh we'll start with the site clearing. Uh comes at no surprise that the site clearing project uh was much faster and completed um quicker than anticipated. Um what goes on to that property next? Uh while we've had discussions, we simply can't know the answer to that until the results of the March twelfth referendum vote. Uh so we'll sit tight until next month. And Mr. Parapato already gave the updates as far as the referendum goes, but on behalf of the board and administration. Regardless of your vote, it's important for you guys to get out there and vote. This board could only provide the opportunity. For you to say yes, whether you want to say yes or yes or no. It's your right. You hold the power and ultimately you'll make the decision. So that's all that this board could could um could provide for you. Um with that, I'll open it up to Mr. Borisak for the borough liaison report, even though I steal this under every month. Great. Uh also, these were mailed to every single resident of Little Ferry. Just wanted to point it out. Um check your mailboxes. Mine came today. Yours may come tomorrow. Again, I'm reiterating this goes to every single resident that lives in Little Ferry, whether is it homeowners, apartments.
If anybody would be.
Anybody with an address in Little Ferry. So make sure you read it. All of the relevant information is on here about the boat. It's also providing information on. On our community information forum, which again, we're urging everybody to come to. Listen to the experts, listen to what we've been listening to for the last three years. And again, you don't necessarily have to agree with. You know, with us, but it's nice to communicate with one another and just understand why. Um we've made the decisions that we've made and we're open to hearing you as well. It's not one sided. Um so please come on the twenty second. We want to see and hear from you.
If you don't get one of these, we we do have uh the leftovers here that we can always get out.
Um, okay, and now Mr. Pytro's for the Ridgefield Park liaison report.
Um the next meeting is uh this upcoming Wednesday, the twenty first, so we've been on meetings since our last meeting, so I love things to course.
Thank you. All right, we're going to open it up for public comment, and this is only on agenda items. Um if you haven't received the agenda, it may be at podium. Um but again, at this portion, it's public comment on agenda items only. Brenda, do you want me to give you a minute?
No, okay.
You sure? Okay. All right, uh we'll now move agenda item. Oh, that'll be um after we take our block vote. So just to type.
Oh, okay.
Give us like two minutes. Okay. Um, all right, so we'll now take a block vote on F four to F seven, D O eight to D O twenty four. P seven to P fifteen, C three, F A two. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, this is Bertoli.
Yes.
The fellow is absent. Mr. Pytro, yes, Gottlieb. Thank you. Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Filosuso?
Yes.
Mr. Borisak?
Yes.
Mr. Benelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradley?
Yes.
All resolutions passed.
Great. We'll now open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. If you want to just come to the podium, state your name and address, and then um all speakers get five minutes.
I leaned a little. Levin Chapman joined. Um trying to make this fit.
No, no, don't rush, don't rush. We won't put the timer on you yet, but maybe we'll play some music when it's time to.
Which one here is about? Okay, when we had Sandy, right, uh Richmond came here and I told Ford that to have the school board up to um. Up to coal and so on, right, would cost approximately ten million dollars plus any extra naturally. And you would get money more from the state. And if you were going to build a new school at that time, it would be thirty million plus extras. Uh, you know, to the to the force, and you would also get probably around a third, you know, from the state, okay? Uh. They did your work on the school, you know, to fix it up, basically, so kids could go in, but that was kind of how I seen by financial. It went by and nothing really, really was done. I mean, they did minor things, but nothing large, right? And then the school became. Not safe, so they had the permanent module room, right, and they've been there since, yeah, about twenty nineteen. Yeah, okay, so now, right. They have the referendum. Now you will war against it whatever you want, right? And a new school is going to cost thirty eight million plus. Right, compared to what it was before everything goes on.
Plus extras. What does that mean?
There's always ants your jaw, any kind of construction.
So we just want to reiterate, and we could, I'm not timing, so we can have, so I just want to reiterate to you in the public that the thirty eight million is the max possible that we could spend. That's not necessarily saying that we are going to spend all thirty eight million, but there's no extras. So that thirty eight million costs construction. It costs. All the way down to the furniture and the desks that's inside, so. We legally can never go over that thirty eight million unless we were to take that money out of some other state budget or funding that we've received within that thirty year timeline. So if if that's any cause concern, I just wanted to address that now.
But I have read in the paper that they may not be wanting from the state going to pay any kind of new construction. I have read that in the paper.
So we're getting one point six billion from the state.
Now, but then after that, it was in the paper, and I thought, well, I don't think. You know, you put that, you're going to get that if you weren't going to get.
So it's not towards the actual thirty eight million. It doesn't come off the top of that. What it happens is it helps pay off the debt.
Okay, all right, and now also. Um. Uh I'm not a contractor, but do we need actually on the roof, right? Um a playground, schooling and that, because that only adds to your liability and your insurance. So also, uh as far as the cafeteria goes, I think it's a great idea, you know, but in the end, you have the. Company that's going to buy the school, right? And you have to bring, you've got a liability insurance, it's going to go off some. And then it's going to come to pass, where you're going to need a pass to go to work, to go to the other, for the kids. So that's an overhead to cover. So that that here.
Can we just like pin, just address each one of those really quick?
Okay.
Uh, okay, so the reason why we're adding the rooftop is because. What we want to reiterate to the public again is that this is, we've only created a building of what we need. It doesn't, it's not what we want. We would love to build a four story, which was originally in the plan in twenty eighteen prior to joining the board, a beautiful space, but what we. Have built is solely what the Department of Education has said, what we need and the potential to grow if we need to. The rooftop is just a way for us to have more place space for the kids without actually making the building bigger. So it's not necessarily adding the cost, but just use a lot, utilizing the. You know, um and so I was nervous about that whole rooftop thing too. We had a picture up here. I don't know if it's here. It's beautifully secure. If you see, I think, um Mrs. Paragala is going to go grab it for you right now. When you see it, it's a bit of a stunner. These are kind of new what they're putting in sort of areas where there's really not too much land, but that we could kind of maximize going up. Um as far as the cafeteria goes, now this board. Was adamant about making sure that these kids are getting healthier lunches. So this year, we completely revamped and replaced our food provider, which is now Macho's, which they're wonderful. With the new kitchen, what I want to just let the public know is that this kitchen only has microwaves and heating capabilities. It doesn't have a working stove where we could make fresh foods and just give the kids a healthier option. And that's something that the new kitchen across the street would provide. So we're not necessarily bringing anybody in a food service company to like do all of that. We're going to have. Somebody to cook.
Have the black lunches that you could put in my voice.
It would actually be like whole fresh.
They would be able to make, they would be able to offer a lot more options because they were to make them on site. So a lot of things that are made now either have to be brought here during the the school day. Uh or they have to be reheated here and put like a warmer and places that nature. So what this would have done doing is just allowing us a lot more collecting. Offerings for the students.
And healthier, anything that's made, he reheated, you know, eh, not great, but if you could have somebody coming and makes fresh food and then that would be transported into this as well. Um and then furthermore, as far as the pass goes, the reason why we love the building across the street and. One of the many reasons we decided to make it a middle school is that it would now be its own separate entity from here. So the kids would no longer have to say. Take their classes here and walk across the street to the to use the gyms, similar to what we cater to is doing now in the modulars where they have to go outside and kind of like go back and forth. The kids would no longer have to do that because this would be a true elementary school, so it would have our new preschool program all the way up to our fifth graders. And across the street would be six, seventh and eighth. And across the street would be sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They would have their own principals, their own curriculums, their own spaces, gyms, music areas, whereas now they're all wearing that. So go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make sure we're addressing. Yeah, and, and what Mr. Millie was saying too is, um, what would also benefit the school is now the modulators, um, where at their max allowance and how long the students could be in there. However, we would potentially be able to rent those out if and when. God willing, the kids under.
They're permanent modulators, but they're still falling through, they, they still fall under the guidance of the O E. So the shelf life for that is five years, they could give you ten, they could give you fifteen, they don't have to necessarily stretch you down, but Mr. Gomez can get a letter tomorrow, addressed to him and I, that says, you have until, you know, you have two years to get out of there, and they're no longer being used. I'm not saying that that's going to happen, that's why I don't really advertise that, but what we're looking to do is generate revenue from there if we can. It, it's an option that we have on the table. Uh, whether it's South Burner, Georgia, or other places of that nature, that, that would take over some of the classrooms there, pay us to rent their space. So instead of us paying, send our kids somewhere else, we'll be paying us. It, it opens up a lot more options for us to be able to use those modules.
And a past referendum would provide those who want to rent the modulators the opportunity to say, okay, this is happening, we could at least start getting pricing for that, and that would bring the income to the school. But again, you can't promise any generated income from them unless we know that kids.
We, uh, increase if, don't you need, to have the, uh, the grant, if you want to afford, do the kindergarten.
It, it, it certainly could be a possibility, yes. You mean for preschool?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it, we have a lot of different avenues that we're looking to use that for, and we would sit down and do what we felt would be the most financially responsible, physically responsible for the district and the community, uh, before making any of those decisions.
Well, you do realize, I know you do, that fifty-seven percent ran about there of our tax money goes to school. More, sixty-plus.
Fifty-one.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's gonna go up higher, you know, and a lot of people, the taxes are gonna go up higher actually. You know, and the business in the paper, it's three fifty-seven, fifty dollars a month. I mean, it's gonna be more than that, you know.
It can't be more than that for the average household.
Well, yeah, how?
If you're out, it's more than that, yeah. But I'm saying the numbers that we've advertised are the highest that it could be, so, and we use very conservative numbers. So right now, the conservative number is usually about four and a half percent for the interest, which we know is lower than that for new construction like this. So right off the top, if we were to strike the bond today, the number fifty would actually be lower for the average of this home. Uh, I personally sat down with, with Senator, Mr. Gomez, with Senator Leggano, uh, to be talking about trying to get more funding for the project. Uh, those things are moving along. I don't have any commitment at this point, but we are not just accepting the fifty dollars a month for the average of this home. We are working day in and day out to try to drive that number down, but by law and obligation, we have to present the, I hate using the word worst-case scenario, but we have to present the worst-case scenario to the public, and knowing that that's as high as it can go for those homes. But we are working every day to get it down, and we have about a year to drive that number down for the time that we strike the bond.
And true, you have that, but they assess that, but there are people that got, uh, now, they're exactly four hundred thousand, four hundred twenty, five hundred, you know, so.
A hundred percent, yeah, and, and we're not, we have no point or putting our nose up in the air that we don't think it's expensive, but, you know, we did run numbers for the renovation thing, the items that you were talking about, and it came within one percent. So it was about thirty-five to thirty-six million to renovate it and get it to where we would want it as far as space goes. Thirty-eight million dollar for a new building, thirty-eight million dollars for a new build, building. But at the end of the day, with the thirty-six million dollar spend, there's no way we can mitigate the flood risk because we can't raise a hundred-year-old building. So you'd be spending a little bit less, maybe of, less than one percent, but you would still be at risk for that, for the flood that, that happens. I can tell you right now that it's like a lake over there, and they keep, the water just keeps coming up on the bottom because of, of the water. And there's nothing you can do to mitigate that. Uh, besides everything else, the asbestos and the A B A compliance, the elevators that are split.
When they, uh, if they did the insurance pay for the work that they did, and they did some work afterwards, building is just there, they just integrated to a point where.
And it was, and you can tell by the way it came down, it, it, some of those things, when it was hit in certain areas, it just, it just crumbled. And, and, you know, I, I even know Tony Lincoln speak too, like it, it just wasn't safe anymore to, to house students, and that's why they had to close it. Uh, and we, you know, as a board, we did not take that decision lightly. We do that, it's what it meant to the community, and we, we are, we made sure we went through every different scenario before making these decisions. We use engineers, we use architects, we, we, financial advisors, bond counsel. I mean, we had meetings for, for onwards towards about two years before making these decisions, and, and this ultimately where we came to. Uh, and I just to back up your point, you know, for us, this is a need, it's not a want. It is a need for the district, but we wanted to do this with the community in mind. And the number is what it is right now, but what I'm telling everyone is you have my commitment that I will work every single day to try to get that number down. Uh, I cannot promise because, hey, I'm not allowed to, but, I, and I don't know what the outcome will be, but I can tell you that I will not stop working until I find more funding for it.
It's just sad, it's very sad.
It's very sad.
They had done it maybe in the beginning, save maybe eight million, nine million dollars, you know.
I can't go back, but I can tell you that is definitely where we are. Well, we know. We, we're looking into the possibility of a high school, we're looking a lot of involved with that. They wouldn't just let us do Little Ferry High School, we had regional, but then we had a client partners, but you can't get partners to commit unless you know the state's gonna let us do it, and the state's not gonna let us do it on the, the real case. So that's, that, that's one of the reasons. And it's that a lot also could die, the architects and so engineers, the deal, we will not approve that lot price. Yeah, no problem.
Visited the senior center, um, and anybody over sixty-five, if you haven't registered or applied for a tax freeze, um, we can take your information and submit it to, um, Liza Raffi, our pro. Yeah.
Because there's a lot of new tax freezes. And they increased it from ninety thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's right, I read somewhere.
Yeah.
And, uh, last thing too, and I'm doing this work too, and my kid may never even step foot in that building, even if best-case scenario. But my point is, I live in Little Ferry, it's my community. I want the kids of the community to be proud of where they go to school. This is not just saying it's fifty dollars in my taxes, and I understand how expensive that is, but we're making an investment in our community. You know, currently, there are people that say, oh, Little Ferry, the kids are going to trailers, I don't want to live here.
Well, I have one other question, it has nothing to do with the building.
Go ahead.
But, uh, at one time, we were rated very, very well as far as the education curriculum went. And then we went downhill. Are we going uphill?
We are showing improvement.
Yes, yes, I hope so.
You know, and we have to make sure that we're keeping good families here, and they want to stay in Little Ferry, and that's ultimately, it's gonna be invested in the community. It's gonna be, it's gonna be hard, and it's gonna be an interesting day on March twelfth, but we're just hoping that people come. And let me also say, thank you for just coming here and having the conversation with us.
You don't prefer some, you go to the second.
Let me also mention too, that the second time, yeah, the second time, the costs may actually increase because as we all know, we're in the middle of inflation.
Everything goes up.
And so that's something that the town.
We have heard those rumors, we have heard the rumors, we're all, we'll just, we'll fail it the first time, and they'll just take ten million dollars off it. I can, that I can promise you that there is not ten million dollars to take off that building, we probably can't afford one billion dollars on that building. So if we had to go back out, it would be the same bottom, the same scope of work, and then we would just have, we would be at risk of what inflation does to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We know it's Mr. Ann.
Okay, um, here's a little bit home, like I had took patience to Parapato a couple of days ago on, um, there's a film that you can put on the windows, um, it's called.
Brienne.
Three M Window Film Security. Now, there is a grant that the deadlines for the grant is in March fifth. Um, I have the information, if you want me to share with you later, John.
Definitely.
So it's basically where it's, it's, the videos, everything are beautiful, it, it really is, it's the safety factor. What it does is, it's difficult to penetrate the glass completely. This will buy time for emergencies to get here in the meantime, where I wouldn't have wanted for the catch, where basically, and, and I can't believe nowadays that we even have school custos. I mean, I went to the school, and, and it was like, it was very different now, with all the shootings, with this and that. We have to be more aware of our surrounding situation. In the extra school program, um, I'm in the, the lower grade levels where the windows, you're actually, you're actually, you're shooting, you're a sitting duck sometimes, where you basically don't know. So if you would get the, the grants out there, there's a tremendous amount of money that's available for it. It's just that we have to be diligent to file for the grant, which as I said, it ends March fifth. If we have that extra money, that seven hundred and fifty dollars thrown in there, maybe we could give a little bit towards that. Um, it is a safety factor. So you're taking what?
That, that reserve is restricted.
But didn't you just say there was seven hundred and fifty thousand left over? But didn't he say there was something that the board would decide?
That was probably for the, what goes into the revenue.
Yeah.
You can only use it for tuition, so what you would do is you would see a line in my budget, just using the four thirty as revenue. Nothing says you have to use it, but if you're gonna use it, it can only be for tuition, either regular tuition or special, to offset special education too. You offset the regular tuition, and that'll free up money for, it's highly restricted that one. They all are, you can't, the capital reserve must be used for capital, the maintenance reserve must be used for capital maintenance, and the tuition can only be used for that.
Something's under the police, so maybe we could piggyback onto with the police, because they get grants too. So that's, I did my homework on that, so that would basically.
Can I ask you what agency is the grant?
The School Violence Prevention Program, federal grant, the grant deadline is March fifth, two thousand four, two thousand twenty-four. I have all the ideas, make your idea.
Okay.
So afterwards, I'll, I'll basically give you everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Brenda Dagan, thirteen, Christina Street. I just have a quick question and something that I have been asking you more. Um, so my first question is for Mr. Faitros. When is our Ridgefield Park meeting date and time, and is anybody able to attend?
So the meeting is Wednesday, February first. I would love to come, attend, okay, by every Wednesday, I will then, at, uh, seven o'clock. We said seven, seven thirty, I, seven o'clock, seven.
Seven.
Um, yes, seven o'clock. And there was the third, Thursday of the, third, third, Wednesday, two, third Wednesday.
Every third Wednesday?
Yes. And you can also get on remotely as well, they also have it on remote. So go on their website, and you can, uh, dial in remotely, and you can also ask questions remotely too. They still have that app.
Okay. All right, um, thank you.
No.
Uh, my second question, and it's something that, um, I've asked for years, and I was told that I have to ask for a year, but I was just wondering, who do I talk to in regards to, um, possibly changing out the wood chips in the, in the playground outside?
Let me look into, we actually can give you that answer, because it's a, it's kind of a shared.
It's a shared space, that's what we're, um, told before.
The B B W does help us out the fact that, that we can also provide the, the wood chip.
Okay, because my, my basic situation with the wood chip is that they have a mask, um, when it rains, they get foggy, the kids get dirty, um, kids have gotten wood chips in their eyes. It, it's just a safety hazard at this point.
We hear the same thing about the rubber stuff as well, so I, I'm just being honest with you.
Well, maybe not a rubber, rubber chip, if you have just like a mat, um.
Yeah, and, and again, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I just, you know, those are all, you know, budgetary items, that's where you go through some of these things, because, uh, those rubber bases are, are quite expensive.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
And sometimes it's hard to put them in when they exist, the equipment's there, and we have to look at this, view those things. But it's, it's certainly something that we can explore as we go ahead of the budget season.
Yeah, it's just, um, you know, we have pre-K kindergarten, first and second, they use it, that's a big range.
Pre-K is getting, uh, a flight route as well, so that'll alleviate some out there, so that, that should, they're, they're breaking ground, like probably like two months, but too much, so they can get to.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to bring that up again, and thank you guys.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Everyone wants to say, second?